Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for June 4th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Let's start out with, we have a little situation we have to straighten out here. Mike Perrell, you come up for a minute? A little situation between Acton and Chapley that we wanted to try to see if we couldn't straighten this out before we get too far here in the agenda and the budget year and whatnot. So, Michelle, would you come up too, please? So, I've been going over a bunch of numbers and whatnot, and basically what we found was that we wanted to present you with this. Mike, you want to read this for her?
(inaudible) Maine, 2019 Certified Treasurer, Michelle L. Rumney, on behalf of the towns of Chapley and Acton, congratulations and thank you. Your hard work and dedication to both towns is greatly appreciated. You are truly an asset as an employee and as an individual. We are lucky to have you. Great job on your accomplishment.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
I don't have to give a speech, right? Thank you, guys.
Michelle is, as you know, the treasurer in both towns. This year she became a certified, certified...
Treasurer.
Treasurer, okay. I was thinking accountant, then I know it wasn't. Yeah, public accountant, treasurer, which is a huge accomplishment. I don't think either town has ever had one before that's been certified. So, we want to say thank you, Michelle. It's a huge accomplishment. And we're just going to take about a 10-minute break right now, so just to, so the folks in the audience can visit with Michelle and say thank you, and she can blush and get all mad at us, and so, right now we'll take a break.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back. Congratulations again to Michelle on her award that we, we in Chapley presented to her and for being a certified town treasurer. So, okay, moving on, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to approve the agenda with an additional G under new business for executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the addition of G in executive session under new business. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
Just for clarification for the record, that's pursuant to 405-6A, correct?
405-6A, thank you, personnel. Okay, minutes of the last meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st and May 29th.
Twenty-eight.
Minutes? What's that?
Twenty-eighth.
It would be the 28th, I think.
Sorry, 28th.
Okay. I'll second that.
Nineteenth was a Wednesday.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve May 21st and 28th minutes. Any further discussion? Call for a meeting, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, department heads and committee chair updates. Do we have any?
I've asked the rec committee chair to be here this evening.
Sure, sounds great.
So, okay, just wanted to update you with the light situation at the rec field. We've already had, as you know, the warrant approved to the improvements there sometime last year, so we're running pretty close to the end of the financial year to get this done. There's about 8,000 left on that particular warrant, and we got prices in to have two poles fitted at the field with, they came in, I think, at about $900 a pole, and then we got Craig Norman to have a look at the lighting situation down there. And just to refresh you, this isn't about actually having floodlights on the field, it's just about getting the kids off the field safely in the fall at the end of the summer season. While we were there, we were thinking we'll probably get some light onto the parking lot at the same time for exactly the same reason, and it will double up for the ice rink in the season as well. So, after speaking to Craig and getting the quotes for the poles, it all seems like we can get everything done within that budget, and so we're hopeful to move forward with that as soon as possible, and we're certainly within this fiscal period.
Good, great.
That's pretty much where we are.
Yeah, so this is the, again, the 17, 18, so this is prior to the full, the 18, 19. This is prior to being appointed to the full rec committee, so most of the committee members on there weren't privy to it, but it was a capital improvement fund, and we went back and reviewed and looked at the budget information, and that is what they planned on doing with it. If you may recall, Mr. Long brought it up a few weeks back, so we started kind of digging in from there.
Sure.
The only thing, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, is these poles that we're going to place, they are going to be lights facing one way of the parking lot, but essentially, have you seen where the Xs are, Dennis? Have you been down since the X marks the spot?
I didn't notice until last night.
Okay.
There's one right near the recreation, the, sorry, the concession stand, and then there's one just on the other side of the moat gates.
Oh, I did notice that.
So, the idea is that there'll be either two or four lights on each pole facing an opposite direction, so we'll be able to hit both sides of it, so...
Essentially, we'll have, I think, four lights heading towards the field, because he said that that would give us enough illumination to be able to bring the kids off the field, and then the other two lights facing into the parking lot, which will also give some illumination for the ice rink as well.
It's all going to be down lighting.
Yeah, well, they're going to be up high, and they're going to be facing downwards, correct? Yeah, there's no, shouldn't cause any light pollution.
And we're not, I don't know if I've shared this with you, we're not sure if we're going to do four, either four to six lights. His numbers did come in a little higher than I would have liked to see them, so I'm working with him on that, and we're working with code enforcement to get the proper piece. Did you talk to Mr. Langley? I see him standing behind you. Was there any discussion about the digging?
There hasn't, because I never got, I was waiting for the distances between the, for the actual trench that was needed.
Okay.
But at the moment, I mean, I can run down there and get those distances anyway.
We just need to make sure that A plus B plus C equals what's in there.
Equals less than...
So, essentially, it's just going to be the digging that would need to happen, and the electrician would do the rest, and it'd be backfilled.
Yep.
So, if we can pull it off, I mean, it's, we're running tight, but it was a capital improvement account, so it's something that was, you know, just for that, but we'd like to order the poles tomorrow. If I can invoice them in this fiscal year, we should be able to make it work. The electrician is going to be, definitely going to start the work in this fiscal year. It may run over a little bit, depending on what the excavators, I mean, it's short notice, but it was, it was approved, and we really should do it, because the money will go back into that account, and since we haven't put it on the warrant, we're going to have to wait another full year, so if we can get the lighting done...
Yep.
And that's pretty much it?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to stay, Jonathan, just for...
So, last week when I talked about the tree limbs out behind the town hall, since then, I've reached out to the church, to a lady I know, she just, now I'm kind of playing phone tag, I got to get ahold of somebody, because it was brought to my attention, we, the town hall may not own as much land as they think, so being good neighbors and everything, we want to make sure, and I'll sit down with them as the deputy fire chief and explain my concerns for a fire break, and then also, you know, for eliminating those oaks up, which we believe is the edge of the town line for the property. So, next week I'll, I'll definitely know where things are, and we'll walk the property.
So, money-wise, while you're here, I mean, if, if, if we find out that the trees are right on the town line, it would be nice if the town and the church could split one day's worth, but that's what most of the town's going to be able to do. Essentially, we thought we were going to be able to, okay, a full day, one day out of this year, but when the generator work, and the board hasn't, doesn't know this yet, but when the generator work was completed, something happened to the box, and I don't want to use my words, and I'm going to be completely wrong, but they ended up having to redo a lot of work in the box to make CMP happy. It had nothing to do with the generator work, so it was in a bill that we weren't expecting from the electrician. He had to, Ken can explain it to you, but he had to redo a bunch of breakers and stuff in there to make it legal and up to par, so that, we ended up getting with a $1,200, $1,300 electrician bill that I wasn't expecting, that was your tree money.
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that, you know...
As soon as you find out exactly whose tree it's on...
You know, if this doesn't happen until the next fiscal year in July or something like that, which is fine, it's just that, you know, there's a few things that need to be addressed out there for, for that and everything, and we'll go from there. We'll see where our monies are and stuff.
And if you hear back prior to the board meeting, if you could let me know and not wait till the Tuesday, that way we can...
Yeah.
Because they've already given the approval to do some cutting, so if I can make it happen number-wise, we'll move forward.
Yeah, that's why I just want to let you know, keep you guys in the loop there, because we're getting tight on time here, so, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, committee chairs?
How are you?
Good. Everybody knows you, but just state your name.
Yeah, Joe Letourneau, District Two Road Commissioner. So, we're kind of pretty much finished up on the patching for the, for the year, well, not for the year, but for now. And I did just get off the phone with Jeff Goodwin, he's going down tomorrow morning to grade the guarding road, so that's going to get graded, and then we're, from there, we're moving over to flat ground road. So, that project, hopefully by the end of the week will be underway.
Okay. Do you know all that needs to be done on flat ground?
Well, Jeff had gone down there, I don't know if he, did he actually meet with you down there, Dave?
No, we got to...
But I did talk to Dennis, and we're...
We do have, we can give you a copy of it, kind of a breakdown that we have...
Well, we have a quote that the prior road commissioner gave us, so, I mean, you're going to be bringing in Phil and...
Going to be bringing in more gravel, but as I understand, I talked to Dennis, I guess it was three weeks ago now, so there's no more ditching, just basically bringing in gravel.
Yeah.
So, but he's going to get in there, he might go tomorrow, if he has a chance, to start it.
Did he give you a quote with liability insurance, all of that good stuff ahead of time?
I guess, and does he know how much he has spent?
Well, I mean, we don't, we want to get a quote instead of just saying you've got this much money to spend. I mean, have you...
Well, no, no, I didn't tell him how much money we had to spend on it, as far as the flat ground road. I mean, obviously, the guarding road, we're obviously just going to grade that.
Oh, he's doing that for you, too?
Yes.
Yeah. So, do you have any numbers for the flat ground road?
I don't, because he and I were going to go look at it and figure out exactly what we need to do.
I guess you know where you...
I mean, I know what we need, what we can spend.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So... Just make sure we touch base with the insurance and all of that before he starts any work.
Yep, okay.
We may have it on file, I just need to check.
Right. And then the other thing, yesterday I rode around with Frank Carroll Jr., and we assessed the four wish list roads that I would like to do, and I do have some numbers on that. I mean, they're budget numbers, they could, you know, they could go one way or the other, like he said, but it depends on how the paving bid comes in, and...
We'll stick around, we'll be opening those shortly.
Yep.
Which roads did you look at?
Well, we looked at East Shore, that was pretty much just a shim and overlay, but there were sections on the hop road, he, well, I'll get it right to you here, actually.
You're not going to give us numbers, right?
No, I'm not giving any numbers, but no, there were sections...
I just wanted to watch the road.
No, no, I'm not giving any numbers, but there were sections where, you know, we had discussed about grinding and, and then, but anyway, I'll talk about that.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
Any other department heads, committee chairs? Going once, going, oh, come on, Troy, great.
Good evening, Michael Corey, APAT manager. I just wanted to give everybody a clarifying understanding of what has been going on with the live feed and some other technical issues we've experienced. It all originated when a cable running from the TV switch to the camera became faulty. I ended up buying a, one that was too long, that degraded the video quality, that's when somebody complained about the focus. Atlantic Broadband also had, found an issue on their end and replaced a part, that was week number two or three. And last week, I hate to say it, but it was my fault, I plugged in the wires in the back when I was troubleshooting all the issues, and I plugged them in wrong, so I rectified, remedied that. I also found another issue with some wires that were, that were grounding out, took care of that as well. I'm playing with some of the audio to try to make it more loud on the live feed on their end. I'm sure that little tweaks can be done, so I'm going to purchase some cheap equipment once the budgets are unfrozen, to take care of that as well, or try to at least. So, we're live now, the audio quality is better, and I'll keep tweaking it and try to make a little, enhance it a little more.
Do you have money in your equipment line now that needs to fix the, I mean, if it's a, something that needs to be fixed because it's broken, the board may approve the expenditure, and we don't want you to wait and it go down if you have the money in there now, and it's...
It won't go down, it's just a cable that I want to test to see if I can get the live feed audio quality a little crisp for people watching it right now.
Any idea of the cost?
It's like 40 bucks, 30 bucks. It's not too much.
I wouldn't have an issue with that.
Yeah.
I was just going to pay for it out of my card and just try it out.
Yeah, we'll, you'll approve it, what, up to 50?
Yeah.
Up to 50 bucks for...
Yeah, let's just buy it the regular way we do.
Yeah.
Clean up, the auditor.
Yeah, if there's an, if there's an audio problem, that's, you know...
Well, I'll test, I'll test the cable to see if that will...
More of an essential item.
So, that's the gist of the situation, besides the fact that I did a, an update on the production computer, and in doing so, it destroyed the process of production, causing all the video feeds to loop and the audio feeds to be fine, so I had to roll back that computer, too, on top of all of the other issues that were happening, and reproduce the entire month of May and all the videos that we have on, on file right now. So, all of that has been taken care of, and everything's up and running and back in, back in the production process.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, once again, any other department heads, committee chairs? Going once, going twice, moving on to old business. Fire rescue commission.
Well, it was my hope to have these people appointed tonight, as the fire department had a meeting last night, but as I understand, even though the fire department had three or four names moved forward, the chief wants to wait until Saturday where he has additional training and thinks there'll be more warm bodies, and wants to have a bigger pool, so, you know, he did tell me there was three or four people present, but they wanted to kind of wait to see if there were other people, maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't. He did know we were looking to appoint them tonight, but nevertheless said that he would call me next Monday with names. So, I have the other people, as far as the Warren Finance Liaison, Selectman Liaison, you guys authorize the member of the public, and I'm going to reach out to the chief in Sanford. So, in the meantime, I guess I'm looking for permission to at least start advertising the job. We're going to pull the last job description and update that a little bit. We talked about putting the 911 piece in there, we talked about making sure that this chief is trained on the billing, so that he or she can fall back on that, so we don't have the same issues that we've had the past couple of years, and then I'll put that nice clause, any other things related to fire and rescue as signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
So, if all goes well, we'll get that posted by tomorrow. I think we kind of talked in our workshop a little bit, putting an initial deadline somewhere around the 26th of June, we'll put it out there for a couple of weeks, I can run it on Maine Municipal, get it all out into York County, Cumberland County, and then maybe we can schedule a workshop with the new selectmen Thursday or Friday and take a look at what we, what we get in.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good. Really wish they had done that last night and got us our names, but...
Well, I mean, you can insist on taking the three or four names that they have, but...
This is true.
What's your call?
Do we know who they are?
But he wouldn't tell you.
He gave me a couple of names, he didn't give me three or four, it was kind of, I can certainly, I have no problem calling him tomorrow and getting the names if that's the direction of the board.
I think we need it ASAP.
Let's get this done.
He knew we were supposed to have it for tonight, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if he's not willing to do that, we'll, we'll come up with three names from over there.
Okay, I will call him in the morning.
Yep. Okay. Langley Shore.
So, as I understand, the road committee is meeting tomorrow night, and I expect they'll make a recommendation on that, so we'll table that for next week's meeting.
Okay.
You guys, I sent you the application, right, to review?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah. Okay. New business, resignations. I hate resignations.
So, to the Town of Acton, I appreciate all that my family and myself have gained by being the rec director for the Town of Acton, although we've seen children grow and what they love gained, and relationships with amazing families, and brought together and so much more. Sad to say that I'll be stepping down as the rec director after the spring sports season is over. This is best wishes from Chris Whitman. I did reply on your behalf, telling him we were sorry to see him go, and also we needed an actual date, because I'm not real sure when spring sports ends. So, that's going to be June 21st, it's going to be his last day, so I'm going to ask Jonathan to come back up to the podium as the chair of the rec committee, and with the board's approval, where we have got a selectman seat changing on the 18th, I don't see any reason that the rec committee can't just continue their day-to-day operations, he's not leaving until the 21st. I would recommend not addressing this until after the new selectman seat is filled, because obviously we have, we have a member on the rec that's running for the selectmen, so depending on what happens or doesn't happen, that may affect what we can do and how things shift, so we kind of need to see what happens on the 18th before we can really put this out there. So, we're going to leave the reins up to you, we're going to, Chris, I believe will be at the meeting tomorrow night, but certainly I need you to make an announcement to the committee, and...
Yeah, of course.
But nothing really should change in the meantime.
Right, that sounds, that sounds good.
Being sorry to see him go, so I just need you to accept it.
Very much so.
Any direction you have for Jonathan?
Things come to mind.
Harry asked if he wanted to be the director. I tried to sell on the rec director job, and he didn't buy.
Fighting, huh? He's doing his chair.
Yeah.
I really would have accepted it, but it's, I just don't have the time to have an extra answer to that as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Make a motion to accept that?
Yeah, so, do I hear a motion on Chris Whitman's resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept Chris Whitman's resignation as rec director.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Chris Whitman. Any further discussion? I really hate to see him go.
I know.
I know, they've done so much.
Both him and his wife did a great job, maybe, maybe at some point down the road he'll reconsider, so. Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay.
So, Ed, we'll put this on the agenda for the first meeting with the new selectmen?
Yes.
Whatever date that is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, open the paving bids.
All right, so, we only, we received two bids, but I wanted to let you know that, an email that I got from Pike, I just wanted to read it aloud, it essentially said, Jennifer, Pike Industries will not be pricing the paving this year due to lack of information and the locations and the type of work that will be needed. Please keep us on your bidders list, and we will gladly give the town a price when there is a scope of work. This is Lauren Blair, he's the gentleman that, they paved the transportation, I feel like we've had somewhat of a relationship with him over the years, so I called him when he sent me that email.
Yep.
I think what became difficult, and it really didn't need to be, was the side that Langley is covering. So, when people would call in, I mean, we would explain to them that, you know, you're welcome to meet with Mr. Langley who's covering that, but no matter what happens on June 19th or July 1, he's not going to be the road commissioner, so they needed to understand that the work could change. So, if they bid on certain roads that David says, you know, I'd like to see this done, there's a chance that one of the two people is not going to choose those roads, and they just didn't like the uncertainty, uncertainty, didn't. So, with that said, they chose to bow out, which is certainly fine.
Yep.
We have two, one from Dayton Sand and Gravel, I'll open that one first, and then one from Allstate Asphalt, as I understand is Carroll material.
Okay.
And the bid was quite clear, remember, on what we were looking for from them.
Put my weapon away.
Yes.
Okay, first one, Dayton Sand and Gravel. Okay, paving bid 2019, the only company I know that does it in millimeters. 19 millimeter, 9.5 millimeter, $85 per ton, handwork 135 a ton, curbing $9 per lineal foot, and reclaiming $2 per square yard. There we go. So, 19 millimeters is 3/4 of an inch. I don't do metrics, so...
So, it's 85 per ton, can you say that again?
Yep, 85 per ton.
135?
135 for handwork.
Nine.
Nine, and then $2 per square for reclaiming.
What was the nine for?
Nine was for curbing.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that's asphalt curbing.
Sure.
Yep. There is a letter in here stating an asphalt escalator. Based on Maine DOT asphalt escalator. I'm going to leave that up to someone more than qualified than me to look at it, because we're going to pass these on probably to the road commissioners. Okay, so that is Dayton's. Let's see, machine-laid hot top, 76, 46 per ton, and the other one was 85, let's see, handwork is 15506. I'm assuming that's an 06, or it could be just 155.
155 even.
155 even, okay. So, is it 76, 46, or 76, 40 even?
I think those are all zeros.
Okay, it's the way, it's the way it's written, then, okay, okay. There's a...
Extra loop.
Yeah, extra loop, where there isn't on some of the zeros, okay. So, back to the beginning, machine lay is 76, 40 per ton, handwork is 155 per ton, curbing is $7.50 per lineal foot, and reclaiming is $1.90 per square yard.
Liquid's the same, they're both...
Liquid asphalt at, yeah, 55, 550 per ton. That's where the, that's where the escalator comes in on the other one, so...
When do you, David, do you expect to do any paving before your term ends?
I don't have any money.
Okay. Joe, do you, you're not doing any paving before you're dealing with flat ground roads, so do you see any paving done before July 1?
I would like to, I just don't know if time will allow.
Okay, so I guess with, I mean, can we, I'll make copies of both this, both of these and let them, I mean, we don't need to make a decision tonight.
We usually give them to the road commissioners to have them look it over. Everything else in here is just backup information, information between Allstate Asphalt and DB Carroll. There is non collusion statement, there is references, paving equipment, and just a corporate certificate of action.
If you guys want to go in the other room and look through them, we've got a few things, it's going to take some time.
Just a, any mobilization fees in those bids anyways? Or do they, in this, in the disclaimer, does it say that it's figured into the maps?
I didn't see anything on Allstate's about that.
Why don't you guys take them a look over?
Yeah.
Joe, do you want to take, you want to look at them now? Take a few minutes, and I'll let you into my office.
So, two bids. Could be. He's, yeah, he's from...
It's asphalt, it's called that.
Oh, I don't know who he is. He's with Allstate, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
I wouldn't think so.
No, because...
I thought you were worried about something else.
See, he had any question, yeah. They can call him if he has questions.
I guess I could ask him questions.
Yeah.
Ed, would you have to take any questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay, I'll wait.
Sorry.
My problem, my problem. You want? You mentioned that there. You're on the place in there.
What do we got here?
Hmm? Nothing.
I was wondering what those were.
It was covering Michelle's.
It was covering up Michelle's.
Oh, okay.
It was covering up Michelle's thing. Seems we didn't have any wrapping paper, so... Okay, while they're deliberating, we'll go on to see, sign the warrant.
All right, so everything should be good, done, no more changes. The only things that we adjusted were Article 6A and 7 to indicate the road committee articles, how many were being elected, and who the Warren and Finance and Conservation Committee members were that were expiring.
Okay.
I think both of the ladies proved it when they were here a little earlier, so we should be good to sign.
Okay. What is your wishes on the warrant for...
You made the change at the time on 55.
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, I made the change, and I made the, there was a, there was an S that was plural, it didn't need to be.
Do you want to double-check anything?
Nope.
You might want to, it's been a long day.
I thought you had it up when I said it.
Yeah, I did change it.
Said it out loud.
And it's Article 55, the library wanted to make sure that we got that abstention in there.
Okay. Okay, what is your wishes?
I'll make a motion to sign the warrant for June 18th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to sign the town warrant for the upcoming...
Actually, it's the 22nd, but they have both dates.
No, it starts on the 18th.
Starts on the 18th.
She's right, you're right the first time, so, okay, 2000, yeah, June 18th, 2019. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? for vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, management letter.
It's from RHR Smith and Company. This is a review of the 2019 audit that they're going to be performing, the fees that you already approved. It's a breakdown of what exactly they're going to do, when and for how much.
Okay. Okay, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to sign the management letter, but I feel like it should be called something else, and for how much, right?
Let's see, the dollar amounts.
Let's see, the June 30th, 2019 audit for nine thousand five hundred dollars, the school audit for three thousand nine hundred dollars, and the single audit, if needed, two thousand five hundred.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to sign the audit with RH, RH R Smith and Company. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? We all can sign that. Next, the election layout.
This is more just kind of for, as an FYI, the Secretary of State's office notified all of the towns a couple of months back that we had to present a layout showing where everything was and everything's supposed to be for elections. When you come in on election day, so you take the time to kind of notice that everything is precisely placed in the, in a specific location. Everything from the incoming voting table, to where our ballot boxes go, to where the petitioners go, everything is a measurement, and it has to be so many feet away from other things. The guardrails that are put in, the lines that you see, I mean, it's, it's quite a detailed process. So this was put together from Malsum Valley. Jim Fisk put this together. He only charged us a hundred dollars, which is very good. It was required by the Secretary of State's office, so they could see where everything was and where it went, and the flow of elections, and the flow of the voting. So just wanted you to see that. We'll send it, we already sent it off to them, and it was approved. So they were very pleased with it, right down to the number of booths, how many feet apart they are. It's a process.
Yeah, I'd say so.
So when you come in to vote, don't think that we just set it up that morning.
So those at home can see what, what we're talking about. So basically, it's a...
It takes three days to get it together.
Floor plan of everything that's going to be put up, so... Okay. Contract deputy.
I thought you might just want to update.
It would be nice.
Okay, so let me update.
Oh, go right ahead. I don't, I don't have anything on it, so...
Oh, sorry, so...
That wasn't at the meeting, yeah.
Sorry, yes. So the towns of Acton and Shapley, the selectmen from both towns met with the sheriff's department and interviewed three candidates for our contract deputy last Wednesday. It was an unanimous choice between all six selectmen, that Greg Stevany be the choice. So he's going to be our new contract deputy. He actually started today. The...
All five.
All five, sorry. I was trying not to point out that Ed didn't make the interviews, but now that he's...
I don't, I was, I was not able to make it.
He was not, but he would have been his first choice.
Yes.
No, it went well. They, all three of them were great candidates.
It was hard.
It was very hard.
It was hard, but, yeah.
He was, yeah. So he started today. You'll see him out and about. And I just want to put out clarity, because people are still, I think that something's still missing. Both towns are in a contract through December 31st of 2019. No matter what happens at any town meeting, we already had this deputy through December 31st of 19. So we had to choose one, if for no other reason, to fill the remainder of the term. In June and in November, both towns will be asking the voters if they want to continue the contract for an additional three years, like they asked you three years ago. And then at that point, we would continue. So the timing with Deputy Shaw leaving was just, one's not tied to the other, so...
Yep. Okay. The new deputy, he's willing to stay on, both towns?
Uh, he's hoping to stay on and...
Hoping to stay on for the three years.
Well, I'm going to say, Elise and Kim and I had this conversation before. To be honest, I'm not sure he knows that the contract ends in December. I mean, hopefully someone from the sheriff's department shared that. It didn't come up during the interviews.
He'd be going back to his regularly scheduled duties.
Don't say that.
I hope not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but it wasn't up to us to tell him. I mean, that's an administration piece from the sheriff's department. I would hope he knows.
Yeah, I hope so.
Uh, but yes.
And I hope the town continues with it, because I think it's a valuable asset, so...
He's already knocking on doors. He's made appearances at both town halls, and I think that he'll be a good fit.
Okay. As we've, okay, anything else on deputies?
No.
Okay. As we've done in the past, we do have an executive session tonight. I'm going to open up the public comment first, and then we're going to, actually, when I do the, after we do that, I want to see if they've come up with anything.
I'll go check with the boys.
Yeah, so I'll open up public comment right now. Anyone from the public have anything they'd like to discuss tonight? Anyone at all?
Rollin Waterhouse, taxpayer. Quick question. The two paving bids, one identified three-quarter inch?
They both were three-quarter inch. The nineteen millimeter was, on the other page said it was three-quarters of an inch.
No, I didn't hear you say anything about the, uh, former FR Carroll bid, you know, Allstate paving. Other question. The new deputy, he's currently going to fill the position from now until December 31st. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
And then if the towns, both towns vote to move forward, it sounds like he's interested in moving forward as well. So... Anyone else?
You guys miss me?
Lowest issue, taxpayer. I was just questioning, because last year we had such a problem, and I don't know if Mike's still around or not, but last year we had such a problem hearing, even when we went back to look at it. Is that going to be fixed for the...
That's what he was just talking about. That piece, that piece that he was going to play with, is hoping it'll fix the...
Okay, because I know, I know, I tried, and I think Jen tried. We tried to go back and find out a couple of things.
What are we talking about, the town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike is well aware that that was an issue.
Find what we needed to find.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I mean, I was hoping that this was part of that fixture deal.
It sounded like it.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Okay, so, so basically, they're still going to cover things, should be, so you can physically hear it at that point, and so on and so forth. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Lou.
You're welcome. What did I miss from Rollin?
Anyone else? Pardon?
What did I miss from Rollin? Did he say anything?
Oh, nothing.
Oh. Wow.
He was questioning, he was questioning the deputy.
Oh.
I had two questions.
See what you started.
I just, well, if I have to follow up with something, I need to know. Is it, just, I mean, if you, if you need anything from me, no is fine.
I understand. My first question was simply to ask if both paving bids were quoting the same size. I heard him say three-quarters on the first paving bid. I didn't hear anything on the second paving bid, but he did say that, yes, they're the same. And the other question that I had was with the new contract deputy. His term is going to go from now until December 31st, when the contract expires, unless it's renewed. And yes, that was assured. And now I'll bring up the third item that I wasn't going to bring up. In case you didn't know, what the damage is down at the Bolsh Lake Dam, okay, there is a post in the ground which has a gate attached to it. The gate swings open and closed. The post is knocked down by someone. It wasn't done by, from what I've been told, it was not done through plowing. Somebody hit it. So that's what's going to have to be replaced, is that post.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're good, thanks. Anyone else from the public?
No, but I have an update, sir, chair.
Going twice? Okay, now we will, okay, update on paving?
Yes. So after reviewing them, the gentlemen have asked that we table it for an additional week. They have, there's some questions and the disclaimers on one of the bids that they want me to get further information on.
Sounds good, okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 4056A personnel issue.
Moved and...
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor? All opposed? And as we do in the past, we'll come back out. If there's anything else to update on, we will. Other than that, we'll come out and adjourn. Okay, we're back. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
No, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, we're out of executive session. No updates on anything? So Jennifer is not at the table up front, but, well. So, we've done public comments, announcements. We really don't have any. We've got elections coming up on the 18th, and then the 22nd is town meeting.
The library book sale is on Saturday, 9 to 12.
Okay.
We'll have plants too, and pie.
Plants, pies, right?
Pie.
Don't forget the pies.
People like pie.
Probably real bad.
I can't, I don't know. Lots of pies.
Okay.
I was putting my order in. Do you have anything?
I don't.
No, okay. I just wanted to mention that the Kennedy's Night was a week ago Monday, a week ago Wednesday. If you haven't, if you weren't able to make it, it is on YouTube now, so, and I'd highly recommend for anyone to watch it, so...
We do have two meetings tomorrow night, road committee and rec, both at...
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, so anybody wants to come to those.
Which one's down?
Rec.
Rec is downstairs.
Okay.
Road committee is up.
Very good. Do I hear a meeting to, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Good night, all.